Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to a realm where reality intertwines with the inexplicable, where the boundaries of reason dissolve into the shadows of uncertainty. Welcome to the political twilight zone. I am your guide through this enigmatic labyrinth, where politics and power take on life of their own. In this dimension, the threads of truth weave a tapestry of intrigue, challenging our perception of the world we thought we knew. In this world, nothing is as it seems, and the truth lies buried beneath layers of deceit. Prepare to edge where reason meets the unexplained and where the unexplained might just... Hello, folks. Back another week here goes by. This is Rick Wagner getting it right here on KNZZ KGLN. We're 1192.7 and 98.980, excuse me, 980 and 101.3 and the internet and a few other places. So, thanks a lot for joining us. If you're listening on the internet, thanks for that. I'm surprised how many folks we got out there. I'm very pleased with that. But, eh, you know, especially when you tune in on this, it's like another week, nothing happened, you know, it just kind of just blah da da da. Yeah, don't you wish that were true? Yes, indeed. It's just heartbreaking what had happened in Israel. We talked about that last week. But now, I mean, it just goes on. And there's a big debate in the United States, obviously, about how we should respond. I mean, what's the best response for the United States? What's our interest? Well, I would suggest that our interest in Israel is a lot more strategically important to us than our interest in Ukraine, which seems to be unquestioned by about 80% of the people in Congress, or 70%, maybe, anyway. And so, if they could articulate why one was more important than the other would be interesting to me. What we do have with Israel is we have the only friendly state, actual friendly state, in that region. And what you have is you have the Saudis, who sometimes are friendlier than others, sometimes are not. So, if we're interested at all in having any way to be involved in what goes on, in the Mediterranean on that side, Israel's pretty much it. To say nothing about the fact that they've been pretty good allies for us in the past, so you would think we would try and, you know, be a little more in favor of them. I know many people I talk to are just shocked at the outpouring of just lunacy that we've seen from the left in these protests. I am shocked by it too, but I also think there's one bright side to it, is if you thought you understood how bad the indoctrination and propaganda that was going on on these college campuses was, I think that all of us see now, it's worse than we thought. It's, I don't know how to put it. It is very troubling even to people like ourselves, who figured it was pretty bad anyway. Not only are they radicalized, and appear to be extremely anti-Semitic in a lot of these campuses, but they're dumb. I don't know how else to put it. They don't know what they're talking about. We talked about that last week. You know, you got a country here that's 85 miles wide, 290 miles long, and it's pretty much been under constant attack since it was instituted. And we're instituted in the sense that it was created, we'll say that, by the British Mandate, 1940, the Ball for Doctrine. But then, so was a lot of stuff in the Middle East after World War I, and then following up in World War II. So, we've already discussed this whole thing with Palestinians and whatnot, but a lot of people who have somehow gotten into some very expensive schools don't seem to understand any of that. They don't know it, and they don't care to know it. You know, it's sort of like the difference between ignorance and apathy. I don't know it, I don't care. Yeah, that's kind of what we see. What we want to do is we protest and go off on our government and Israel's government for reasons they really can't quite explain, except, oh, they're killing... What about the killing that started the whole thing? You know, I mean, they didn't start this fight. It's really interesting, and like I said, it's eye-opening. And we thought we had our eyes open to what the heck was going on before. Now, gosh. For those of you that are saving your money to send your kids to college, I'd be pretty careful about where I send them. Not just because you'd like them to turn out to be a little less brainwashed than some of these characters are, but you'd like them to have some kind of return on your investment, right? I mean, you'd like them to come back a little more well-informed and educated than they went. I'm not sure that's happening with a lot of these guys. You know, I see some of the product of college graduates from time to time, it's not very impressive in terms of just your basic stuff, spelling, syntax, word usage, stuff like that. So, even at that most basic level, you need to check that you're even getting your money's worth out of that, much less having your kids brainwashed to, you know, hate or, well, hate the country they're in, apparently, and support countries that hate us. It seems to me that there's that inverse relationship sometimes, is the more you are antithetical to the United States, the more a lot of these campus radicals support you. We've got a lot of problems in the Mideast now, and we can't just turn our back on them because they're a little too big. And other people have talked about this thing with Turkey. We don't hear enough about that, and we need to. Turkey in the past had been a quasi-reliable ally, but over the last seven or eight years, they have become more and more Islamified. They were much more secular before, and as that has happened, they've found themselves drawn more and more not only to some of the more radical Islamic sides, but they've also cozied up to the Russians. Now, granted, the Russians are a little bit closer. Remember that they were sending drones built in Turkey to the Russians, who were using them in Ukraine. That seems to be a little un-NATO-like, isn't it? And remember, Turkey's in NATO, and have a lot to say about things in NATO. They're always popping off about something. And the other thing that's been brought up by some folks, and you may have heard it, but we have an airbase there, I think it's an Air Force base, and it has had nuclear weapons there for decades. Some of them are older nuclear attack, you know, that you'd use for a bomber, they're not necessarily missiles and so forth, as I understand it. But they've been there for quite a while, and since they had this military junta and some disruption in Turkey a few years ago, there's been a lot of talk that they don't want us to take those weapons out of Turkey. Now, and it doesn't seem because they want to protect Turkey, it's that they want the weapons. And they've made noises, apparently, that they are, don't want us to take them out, and maybe they wouldn't allow us to take them out. I'm not exactly sure how they might stop that, but it wouldn't be something we'd like to see. So, these guys, supposedly a NATO ally in Turkey, they are pretty much on the fence in terms of who they're going to support at any given time, and they're pretty key to the area. Remember, that whole region of the transition from Europe to Asia across, you know, it's now where Istanbul is, and it used to be Constantinople and Byzantium and, you know, the Hellespont, you know, all that stuff, it's traditionally been that area, so it's an important gateway through there. Plus, remember, the Black Sea is only accessible by sea through that narrow strait, by the Dardanelles and so forth. So, they have an extremely strategic place, not only on the Mediterranean side, but also, obviously, the Black Sea side, where the Russians need to be able to get their fleet out of the Black Sea if they need to. Having them as a NATO ally is a good thing, assuming that they're actually an ally. Not even sure of that. And they have been calling on with our own Anthony Blinken, the frightened, I almost say frightened rabbit, but I sort of like rabbits, just this sort of not very strong person. The only time you would say he was a stronger person than someone in the room is if he's in with Joe Biden. They've, now it's a ceasefire. Oh, you know, the Turks, and they met with Blinken, they think there should be a ceasefire there. I mean, it's interesting how you have a heinous event, a heinous event, and then as soon as that's executed, then you immediately want a ceasefire. Other people have used this same example, but you know, December 8th, you know, 1941, if we would have decided, we should have a ceasefire, violence doesn't solve anything, we've got to put a stop to this, we should start, you know, negotiating with the Imperial Japanese to stop this cycle of repetitive violence and war. Think that'd been a great idea? I don't think so. And I can't imagine the country at that time thinking that it was. Now, I don't know. All right, everybody, we're back. Yes, and that's, you know, to know me is to love me, I think. I, there are some people who beg to disagree. Anyway, this is the blitzkrieg of crazy stories. Now, I try and gather up some of these stories from the week, and I would say this, is that they are unrelated to each other, but if you think about them, they are sort of related to what the state of the world in our country is right now. If you just, if you just kind of think about how they reflect the general attitude degradation and probably loss of, I don't know, what should I say? The loss of pride. Yeah, that's it. There's a loss of pride in these countries, including our own, maybe even our own especially. And without that, how can you expect anybody to wish the country well, or for God's sakes want to fight for it, die for it? Remember our founders, our lives, our fortunes, our sacred honor? That kind of pride, not out there. Anyway, here's some stories. Here we go. Wait, I have, I don't know where it's at. This is what caught my eye. Of all of the migrants, the illegal aliens, as we like to think of them, and I'm not talking about the ones in the flying saucers that they've been releasing the data on from the government, there's supposedly 18,000 job openings in New York, New York City. They can't fill jobs, and a lot of them are not particularly, you know, they're not financial analysts, they're jobs that require, you know, fast food, or all kinds of things like that. Probably 100,000 immigrants that they say that were in there, the illegal aliens that have come into town, and they were trying to get authorization so that some of them could work. New York has been fiddling away with destroying the idea of citizenship for a while. So, with 18,000 openings, 2,100 of all those migrants have applied for work authorization. 2,100. And of all those tens of thousands that showed up there, you know, the ones that just want to work, just want a better life in the United States. Make that what you will. Here's one that seemed, once again, not exactly, I think it's still the same. Scotland, First Minister, who's, you know, in charge of like Homeland, I think, sort of, you know, it's like the Home Secretary in Great Britain, volunteers their country to be a sanctuary for Gaza refugees. Says America should as well. Now, if you've followed some of this stuff about the, you know, LGBTQ debates that we have in the United States and transgender stuff, Scotland has been out there weirdly enough in the forefront of that. So, in a strange way, this doesn't surprise me, but Scotland, if you're in Gaza, which is a pretty hot, kind of desert-y place, you know, Scotland is not, what do you think Gaza refugees are going to do in Scotland? Which, by the way, has a pretty decently high unemployment rate. What's exactly going to happen? What do you think's going to happen there? Now, why should we also bring in people who, we don't have any idea who they are? Of course, they don't have to come in the United States that way, they can just somehow get into Mexico and just walk in, but why would we want to do that? And why would Scotland want to do that? It's a lunacy. It's this idea that we have to constantly virtue signal. And Scotland's got way out ahead of this in a way that you would never expect from the Scots. I always think of the Scots as sort of being, you know, the, you know, like the Cold Stream Guards and all that kind of stuff, right? I don't think of them as being all of this huge progressive thing, but obviously, I'm incorrect. Also, of course, Rashid Tlaib won't apologize for saying Israel bombed Gaza hospitals, speaking of Gaza. It's clear that that's, that they didn't do that, but it doesn't fit into her narrative. So, like the people before, there's a virtue signaling to be on the side of something that even if it isn't true, sounds good to you, right? And here's one that I wanted to get to because I have a really interesting soundbite to play. Trudeau's Liberal Party, that would be in Canada, you know, the Great White North, eh? Blocks a bill that would have prevented Canada from euthanizing the mentally ill. Now, for those who've been following this a little bit, Canada has sort of become one of the euthanasia destinations out there, outside of, I think Netherlands is another place, but they've gotten pretty aggressive about assisted suicide. I don't know what happened to Canada. Remember, they used to be sort of the friendly Canucks from the Great White North, you know, that sort of like us, but not really, a little sort of, you know, more relaxed perhaps? It's gone crazy up there. And so, they have a new person, and I just have to let you hear this person, who's, he is, he's running for, it doesn't really matter, but he is a politician in Canada that's running for office, one of the higher offices up there. And he gets cornered out in the, out in the, sort of, looks like a grapevine area or something, that's what it looks like, but I doubt if it is. But he's eating an apple. He's very calm, and I want to play this bite for you. Some of you may have heard it, because it's just great. And he's just out there calmly eating this apple, and it's a little easier to tell if you see it, but I think you can tell it just in, with audio, because he has the lower voice, and you hear the reporter asking him questions, and hear what his answers or comments are to them, and it's just perfect. It's, you just want someone in the United States to start to ask, you know, a politician to respond this way. He's not mad at all, by the way, he just continues to eat his apple and asking him questions. So, here we go.
On the topic, I mean, in terms of your sort of strategy currently, you're obviously taking the populist pathway.
What does that mean?
Well, appealing to people's more emotional levels, I would guess. I mean, certainly, certainly you tap, certainly you tap very strong ideological language quite frequently.
Like what?
Left wing, you know, this and that, right wing, you know, I mean, it's that type of ideological...
I almost never talk about, I never really talk about left or right. Anyways, a lot of people... I don't really believe in that.
Okay. A lot of people would say that you're simply taking a page out of the Donald Trump book.
Like which people would say that?
Well, I'm sure a great many Canadians, but...
Like who?
I don't know who, but...
Well, you're the one who asked the question, so you must know somebody.
Okay. I'm sure there's some out there, but anyways, the point of this, the point of this question is, I mean, why should, why should Canadians trust you with their vote, given, you know, not just the sort of ideological inclination in terms of taking the page of Donald Trump's book, but also...
What are you talking about? What page? What page? Can you give me a page? Give me the page. You keep saying that.
In terms of turning things quite dramatically in terms of Trudeau and the left wing and all of this, I mean, you make quite a, you know, it's quite a play that you make on it. So, I'm just wondering...
I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't know what your question is.
Okay, then forget that. Why should Canadians trust you with their vote?
Common sense. Calm.
I hope you could hear that. It's great, you know, because there, because so many of the talking points the journalist is asking, and by the name, his name is Pierre Poilievre, and it's P-O-I-L-E-V-R-E, and there's several different ways to pronounce that, so I'm probably doing it incorrectly. These same questions get asked to people all the time in US politics, right? And they always bumble around and, you know, whoa, I don't stand for that, and he just wants, he is asking questions about their question, because their question is assumptive, right? It just assumes certain things. It's like saying, you know, well, as a radical right-winger, what do you think about this? And he's just not going to let that go by, and he's very calm about it. He said, you know, what people? That's one of my favorites. People would say, because that's a common thing that you get with journalists who want to inject themselves into it, people would say, well, what people? You know, give me an example. And, well, I don't have anybody. Well, you know, it's your question, you must know somebody. And it's very funny to watch this guy stumble around after the guy just is questioning him about, where'd you get the question? I mean, you know, give me an example. What page? What page out of Donald Trump's playbook? What are you talking about? And it's, you really wish American politicians would do that more often. I just, I had to play it for you. If you haven't seen it, if you have, I mean, I've watched it two or three times, and I still can't get enough of it. It just thinks, well, what, why don't we have people like that here a little bit more? You know? Well, let's get back to some news here that I wanted to bring to people's attention. You know, see how this stuff kind of weirdly hangs together? It's just, it's a type of attitude and approach to governance and living that is dictatorial, that couches the idea that trying to appeal to what the majority of people want is somehow wrong, and that if people speak up about it, that's also very wrong. And there's a Democratic lawmaker in a state, I can't remember what it is, but he was talking about that parents should be fined $5,000 if their children are out of control and take mandatory family counseling. The part about that, that, of course, the fine is ridiculous, and who gets to decide what out of control is, is family counseling. What is that supposed to mean? I mean, we're living in such a therapeutic society now, and I talked about this in the past, you know, they sort of diverge into this idea that everybody needs some sort of counseling, right? Which is just one step away from saying, you know, that everybody disagrees with me. It's crazy. And so, they need to be counseled until they come around and agree with me. That's really, I think, what they're saying. And this is the message there, too. So, I'm just highlighting this. We'll be back. All right, everybody, we're back. Thanks a lot for listening. We're here on KNZZ, KGLN, 1192.7 and 980 and 101.3, and we have a lot of listeners on the internet, and of course, we'll have this as a podcast up for all you folks out there. And we're going to talk to a school board candidate, and here's why, like I have to tell you folks. Take a look at the news lately. I mean, just this last two weeks. And if you think that things are going right in schools, and I don't just mean colleges, but high schools and so forth, if you think that's going in the right direction for the country, or even for the kids, I just say, maybe you're not paying enough attention. So, these races are extremely important, and we're going to be talking to someone here that's from essentially District 51, which is mostly Mesa County where I'm at, but a lot of you aren't there, you know, western Colorado and stuff, so there's, you know, there's other candidates. But you guys got to pay attention and get these candidates sorted out and make some decisions that's going to keep your schools from turning into something that you see on CNN. So, to that end, we have one of the candidates here for our District B school district here at Mesa County, which is District 51 for the most part, and it's Barbara Evenson, and Barbara's running for, I think, I think it's B. B isn't boy. Can we still say boy? I guess, I don't know. Is that a proper pronoun? I guess we'll know. So, Barbara, thanks a lot for coming to the show.
Thank you very much for having me, sir. I appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time out to do it. We just want to get the word out here a little bit. Ballots are out and, or going out, rather, and so, we want to make sure people, you know, get a little information, and these kinds of races are hard to get information about. It takes money to get information out, and unpaid position, and you don't get a lot of support from outside of it, so you have to get out and beat the streets and maybe do a few things like this to get people to listen to you. And hopefully, you make some converts who, you know, get their friends to turn out for you. Getting those ballots back is the important thing. So, you've lived here for a few years, you're a former Marine and a former law enforcement officer, which is all good for me, and you have some pretty conservative values, I think you were telling me before we went on the air. And in line, in line with that, and I also have been visiting a lot of the schools and so forth, so in line with that, what do you want to change?
So, one of my last positions in the school, so I actually worked for District 51, right here in Mesa County, and I was a security officer for the Orchard Mesa Schools. I worked for Mesa View, Lincoln Orchard Mesa, New Emerson, Dos Rios Elementary Orchard Mesa Middle School, and White, or, I'm sorry, Gateway School, which is out in the Whitewater area. And during those two years that I was working in the schools...
Is Tim Leon still, is Tim Leon still doing the, running that?
Yes, sir. He's still the Director of Safety and Security with the district.
I know I'm in it with the city.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, during the time that I was in these schools, I mean, I took that, I took that job, and by the way, it was the best job I've ever had in my life, and I was thinking, it's my job to keep these schools safe, it's my job to keep these doors shut, it's my job to make sure that we don't have any, you know, threats, dealing with threats inside of the school, but it ended up being so much more than that. And I saw the struggles that these kids were dealing with, you know, at home, in their, in their personal lives, just, just the drama, the amount of drama that social media was dragging into our schools, and how our educational environment went from an educational environment to a drama environment. And these kids weren't even able to learn. They were so focused on all the things that were happening at home, around them, in their personal lives, you know, with other kids in school, that they couldn't, they couldn't even focus, and they were so distraught. And I want to see those things change. I want to see us, you know, develop relationships with these kids and their families, and have our teachers, you know, having conversations with parents. I want our parents to be so involved, because when we're not involving our parents, these kids don't have the support that they may or may not have at school, they're not having it at home, we're not, we're not having continuity of care. And I want, I want to see us keep not just the building safe, but 100% of our students.
Well, we have a problem, don't we, where you not only get the influence from the schools, but probably even more so now from their, from their phones and their laptops. They're, they're getting inundated with things. It was hard enough when parents just had to worry about what they watched on television. Now, it's incredibly difficult for parents to keep on top of what's happening on their kids' screens and what's happening there. And of course, then you have to worry about what in the world are being taught. So, it's, the job is even greater than it used to be, because there are so many access points you have to monitor as a parent.
Absolutely, and not just as a parent, but also as an administrator or a teacher that's in the district, because we're currently allowing these phones in our school, and a lot of our education is based off of, you know, these Chromebooks that the kids are using, and they're using Google Chats inside and outside of school. And there's just so much techni, while I agree that technology is fabulous, it's also a catch-22. You know, it's being used to educate, but at the same time, it's also being used for social media purposes while the kids are in school, and it's just absolutely distracting to them and just destroying their educational environment.
Well, there's some lazy teaching that goes on with some of that stuff, too. You know, you can sort of keep people amused with that kind of stuff and get some benefit out of it also. Unfortunately, the smartphones are getting smarter all the time, and from what I see, they're getting a lot smarter than our high school graduates. So, you know, they can be used in ways to, you know, so the children don't have to actually learn nearly as much, they can just ask their phone questions and so forth, and then never really get down into the, into the nitty-gritty. You can ask something to divide something and so forth, you never figure out how long division works at all, but your phone does, you know, so if people say, well, I don't really need to know that, you know, really? So, if electricity goes out for a while, you don't have that phone, exactly, what are you going to do on some of these situations, you know? And they don't think that, they've never, they've never experienced that, doesn't even seem possible to them. I think that if there were a, oh, an EMP and it wiped out the tower system for the cellphones, and people didn't have access to that, I think there's a certain amount of people that would tend to go very nuts. They would know what to do. I don't know if they'd just stand, stand in the street vacantly, or if they would go crazy and, you know, start trying to hook their phones up into potatoes or something else to, well, you know, charge them up, but it would not be a pretty situation. And I don't think it's good for society to be so dependent on things like that, especially when it's a substitute for, you know, human intelligence or human creativity, which it is.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree. So, we, currently, right now, you know, that's something that we're dealing with, with our children, is that they were so used to, at some extent, using the computer. Like, for instance, when our children would have to write something in school, they would use their Chromebook, and the Chromebook would automatically give them a suggestion for the word, or the grammar, or the punctuation, and they didn't have to think. They didn't have to think, what kind of a sentence am I putting in here? Is this an exclamatory sentence? Am I asking a question? Am I making a statement or a demand? They didn't have to think about that, because the computer did it for them. And they, and they weren't learning what they were actually writing, and if they put in a word and it would suggest another word, they'd just stick that in there, not even realizing what they were doing, because, you know, spell check is doing all of these things for them, and they're not learning how to truly put the words in there that matter, and how to develop a sentence, and how to develop structure. So, that's something that we've had to work with our children. So that's something that we've had to work with our children, you know, and we, we're not letting them use the Chromebook right now. We make them read everything out. We make them put everything into a full sentence structure and a full, full paragraph structure. But that was something that they were definitely crippled by, um, when we started teaching them.
Well, you know, the way this is going, you'll lose custody of your kids here in a couple of years, the way that, you know, by abusing them like that. We just, it's, well, you know, the thing is, too, you can learn a lot if something corrects something for you, as long as you understand why that, why it was corrected, right? Says, oh, this word works better because. But that's not really how the programs work. And I don't know if, if you've used the new versions of Word, you know, Microsoft Word, but it has an editor function on it, that after you've written something, even with the spell check on, it'll go back through and edit it, and, and highlights that stuff. It has a thesaurus built into it if the word, you know, wants you to do something else. And it even has, and boy, this is really important, it has, even has an inclusivity monitor. So, it will let you know if some of the things you're writing are, are not inclusive enough, or seem to be exclusive of other groups, right? And, which just frightens me to death when I see that creeping into, you know, into your home. And so, I mean, I'm not sure you can learn a whole lot from that experience, because there's no explanation about why it's happening. It just happens, and it tells you this is a better way to do it. Doesn't tell you why it's a better way to do it. And so, you end up helpless in some instances. You know, it's, it's like never learning a language and using a translator on your phone. You know, I mean, you, you, you're essentially crippling yourself, because you put yourself in a situation where you're relying on a mechanical device, and they are by their nature, mechanical electronic devices do not always work, or function, or something. And when they go down, now you're in a situation where you're relying on that device, and you have absolutely no fallback position. And...
Right.
That, that's pretty dangerous in a lot of situations. But, you know, when you're running for school board like you, or, I'm, you know, I mean, I'm guessing you haven't got the endorsement of the teachers' union?
No, sir.
Yes. Well, that's pretty good, then. But I think, I find that pretty good. I think a lot of our listeners will, too. The, up, the downside to that is that there's a ready-made pool of votes. And these, they could just send out a suggestion to all of their members, and this is our, this is our person, and they'll probably do what we want, and need to vote for them. They don't actually probably know anything about you. And so, you have to get a certain amount of, of people involved just to meet that standard, right? Just to, there are those built-in votes.
Yes, sir. So, I do have, I do know quite a few of the people that are on the MVEA here in Mesa County, because I worked with them. I provided security to them in the schools that they worked in. I provided security for them at school board meetings. So, they do know me. Um, they know my name. They know who, I feel like they know who I am. They might not know my full, my full values, morals, ethics, integrity. Um, but I feel like some of these people, these people do know who I am. And, uh, I mean, I hate, I hate to say it this way, but if, if you are so dead-set on aligning yourself with one group, if you're so dead-set on giving them your, the power to take your vote and not to make your own educated decision, then I'm sorry for you.
Well...
So, I feel that every voter has the right, every voter has the right to educate themselves, to make their decisions. But if that's what, if that is what our, our union is doing, then, then so be it. But I, I, that makes me sad.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of teachers I know that, I mean, are in the union, cuz they kinda have to be, but they don't agree with almost anything that is being done. So there's plenty of them out there that are not, you know, part of that situation, but they do have to do a little education. And I guess I would say, I'd go further, that you don't just have the right to educate, you have a responsibility to educate yourself about people. Uh, because, you know, creating a functional republic requires that people have some sort of inquiry and basis for the decisions they make about policies and candidates. And if you don't, then you're surrendering yourself to people's judgment who you don't even know. And lots of people run for offices and try and get powerful positions, eh, for reasons that we might not like if we knew a little bit more about them. If, if we're going to not have a educated policy, public out there about an election, then we're going to get the government we deserve. And I don't think we're gonna like it. But I, I wanted to, happened to talk to you, and I, I think there was one question I was gonna ask you, and then I'll probably let you go here, is...
Okay.
I ask you, what do you wanna change? People don't usually take jobs unless they need the money, and since you're not getting any money, that isn't it, because they want to have everything go the same way exactly. Now, some people do when they're put up by the people that are running the thing. But when you're kind of an outsider here, what do you wanna change? What's, what's one major change you'd like to see in the school district from your standpoint?
Oh, so, I sat in on a bunch of school board meetings, and I saw these parents that were coming in, and I saw these parents that had medical situations going on in their lives. And they almost depended on the public school system to be there for their kids, and to be teaching their children what they wanted. And right now, I know that you're aware that we have a significant declining enrollment in District 51 schools, which significantly affects our budget. Because where those children go, unless it's homeschool, you know, if it's a charter school, then that money follows them. So that money's leaving District 51. And we keep saying, we don't know why these kids are leaving District 51.
I do.
And, and I feel like I do, too. And I go to these forums, and I went to this one forum, and there was a lady there, and she had stage four cancer. And she trusted the district with her children until pornography got shoved down her kids' group, until she couldn't trust what was being taught to her children, because not the curriculum necessarily, but different agendas were being put down her children's group. And there were all of these other classes, and she literally, stage four cancer, and she withdrew her children, and she said, I will teach them until the day that I die, because I don't feel like I can trust you.
Well, I think there's a lot of people feel like that, you know. And, and related to that, I guess I do have another question, is, I understand, I disagree with the shoving down of, of political narratives and that kind of stuff, that we wanna get the heck out of the schools. But I've never quite understood this recent phenomena of, phenomenon, really, of over-sexualized material, and the inappropriately over-sexualized material for age groups, and this, this incredible, you know, push to, to do it, to keep it in, and have, how hard some of these school boards and stuff across the nation hold on to put that in. I'm, I'm very, very confused by that. Do you have any, any idea why that's so important to them?
I don't understand why that's important to some school boards or some districts. I, I, and, I mean, and I, I'm assuming that you're speaking a lot about some of the materials that are in our school libraries. Um...
Yeah, just some of the class choices and the books they use in those, you know? I mean, I, I don't wanna sound too prudish here, but, you know, I think there are age-appropriate materials.
I feel that there are, when it comes down to sexualized literature, I feel that our, and this is just gonna be, I'm throwing it out there for you, I, and I, and everybody knows I feel this way, that I've talked to so far, all the forums I've been on, I've made it pretty clear. I feel that our school libraries are there to support our curriculum. And if our curriculum has nothing to do with any of these things that we're seeing in our school libraries, then those books need to be gone. If we have a public library, it is, it is, it is their right to have what they want in that library. If they ban your literature, then they have a right to ban my literature. So, the public libraries are a different entity. But our school libraries, we, we need to be, I, I don't understand what the push is to keep these in here. And I hear a lot of people say, you know, that, um, well, it, it's, it's a, it's an ideology that we're, we're removing the ability for children to make their own decisions. It's not the school's job to teach children about sex. It's not, it's, it's just not our job. We need to teach our kids how to read and write and do math, so they can be successful in, in society, and obtain jobs, and be functional in our, in our society. It is not our job to teach them about comprehensive sexual education, which is inclusive of so many things, you know? I, I just don't understand why we're holding on to that and trying to maintain these sexualized literature in our, in our libraries.
I think in a lot of places, it's who's taken over the, you know, the teaching establishments, the, who's got their way into the educational upper divisions, and then even in the, in some of the teaching places, not so much here. But if you wanna see a, you know, frightening pieces, you know, go to Libs of TikTok on, on YouTube, and look at some of the videos. And they're just videos that people post. They put them out there for people to see. And then notice how many of them are in the education systems, especially the wild ones, and the insidious ones in some situations. So, there's an agenda there. I mean, you could kinda get a flavor of it sometimes, but the, boy, the craziness that goes along with it, you know? Oh, you're burning books, you're doing this. No one's burning books, and you know...
Not burning the books.
The purpose of the school library is just to that, is to support the curriculum, you know, that there are books that are adjacent to the ones that you're working on, or secondary sources if somebody wants to look it up. I mean, it's not supposed to be, you know, a, a playground for everything that you can think of and wanna read about. Not that you can stop it, they're probably reading it on their laptops anyway, but, uh, you know, there's, it, the, the vehemence that these folks have about that particular piece, and that parents shouldn't have anything to do with it. I just, I haven't quite got there yet, so. Well, Barbara, I...
And that's the thing I don't understand, like, exiting our parents, like pushing our parents away. You know, we say that we want our parents to be involved, but that's something that I've seen firsthand, is parents not being involved. And I, I just can't, I can't understand that. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons I feel about my child's education the way that I do. I want, I want this parental involvement. I want them to be involved. I want them to be aware. I want them to be a proponent for their children's education. We gotta find ways to do that. We gotta find ways to bring our community back into our schools.
Well, if you let other people educate and make your kids who they are, then you better like the way they come. Uh, I appreciate you being on with us here, Barbara. I think you have a lot of very good messages. Barbara Evanson, if you guys have ballots laying out there, you know, put that up. She's running us in an unaffiliated situation, so, but she sounds like a conservative to me so far. You make your own decisions, but I mean, I would recommend that you make sure those ballots go out, none laying there. Proposition HH has to be voted down, too, just off the top of my head. But school boards are incredibly important now. Look at what's happening in the news, and, you know, it isn't all college students, there's high school students, and, you know, what are they learning, or what are they not learning, or, you know, it's out of the old paper chase, right? You know, you come here with a head full of mush. Well, some of these guys are coming with a head full of mush, and they're leaving with more mush. They gotta have something to do with that. So, thanks, Barbara, for listening to the E Talk and giving people some information. So, wish you luck.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. And everyone else out there, we're about done with the show today. I appreciate your participation, and I appreciate your listening. And please vote and get involved.